Okay, I'm going to call the order of the April 24, 2019, meeting of the Board of Education. Mrs. Hutchison, would you please call the rules?
Mrs. Crabtree?
Here.
Mrs. Erickson?
Here.
Mr. Gambiani?
Here.
Mr. Hamlin?
Here.
Mr. Matheson?
Here.
Mr. Broman?
Here.
Mr. Paulson?
Here. Mr. Gambiani, would you please call the rules?
I will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any modifications to the agenda tonight? Okay, any public comments?
Yeah.
Nope, no public comments, okay. We do have one action item tonight, which is the approval of personnel reports to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative certified, classified, or non-unit staff. Do we have any information from Dr. Schuler?
Only that I want to offer a huge congratulations, welcome, and thank you certainly to the Lowell community for their work during the interview process, listening panel. We are extremely pleased tonight to recommend Dr. Jackie Rodriguez to be the next principal at Lowell. Dr. Rodriguez has been an instrumental part of the district for a little while, serving at Johnson, and really has done a great job. And Dr. Slaggy and all of the folks that kind of led us through that process, I think, got us to a recommendation we're very, very confident in, so I would recommend her this evening.
Any other questions or comments, board members? Take a motion and a second to approve the personnel report as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Erickson, second. Seconded by Mr. Broman. Mrs. Hutchison, could you please call the rules?
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Broman?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Happily yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes, also happily. So congratulations.
Oh, thank you so much. Thank you, thank you guys.
Thank you for all the staff that were here tonight, so.
Thank you guys.
I didn't get this right the last time that we appointed a new principal, but you're free to stay if you're interested. However, we recognize there's a lot going on, maybe there's the Game of Thrones on his. Tonight, I don't know. But feel free to go do something with your family or staff or together. Thank you. So that's the official business part of this meeting. Now Lowell suspends the rules and adjourns to workshop setting. Do they have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and adjourn to workshop setting? Moved by Mr. Hamlin. Seconded by Mrs. Crabtree. And Lowell call?
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Broman?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes. Okay, motion passes, we're in workshop setting. Turn it over to Dr. Schuler, a lot on the agenda tonight.
We do, we have three items on the agenda tonight. The first two are updates on key elements of our Vision 2022 plan, our key board goals. So Faith is going to kick us off tonight by providing the board with what has become an annual professional development report, both to reflect on some of what's happened here in the past year and really look forward to some of the key items that we've identified. After the professional development report, Dr. Slaggy is going to walk us through an SEL presentation or update for the board. That's not new for the board, and we've talked a lot around SEL, but I thought that it might be useful to really try to give the board kind of a better look at what SEL really is, what does that look like as we're looking at key initiatives within the classroom and outside of the classroom, so that again, as you look forward to some of the resources that might be needed, we thought that'd be a great foundation. And then we'll end the evening with Bob Lewis will be here from PMA to give the board an update on the fourth phase of your refunding. So obviously not taking any action on that tonight, but we anticipate the board taking action in May, and just really want to make sure that you're fully comfortable and grounded with the fourth phase plan. So three good items. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay, great, I'm going to spend a little bit of time talking about the highlights that have happened so far this year, and then just at the end, preview a little bit for next year as well. So we've been working really hard on the FIT vision, and we've had a lot of focus this year of not only having it be for students, but also for staff. So trying to build up time for that access to knowledge anytime, anywhere, and having them have time to collaborate and create, do critical thinking and application. Here's some of the highlights way back from August, from our Week of Learning 2018. And as a reminder, these are classes that our staff and administration offer, and our teachers sign up and they're not paid for this, this is just a high interest opportunity that we put part of in at August. We also this year had John Spencer, who's very widely been known and studied, brings into a lot of the pieces with FIT. He was so well received at Week of Learning that the elementary principals pulled some of their money and brought him in again for institute days so that all of our staff could benefit from learning from him. Institute days, as we went through elementary, had, you know, we do building-based because it is really important that our principals have time with our buildings and their staff. And then we've done something a little bit different the last couple of years of use the math coaches, the reading coaches, and the FIT triads, that we worked together with those groups to create professional development, but then they tweak it and use it back just with their staff, so that they're not having to create it from scratch, but they are able to break it into small groups and make it very germane to what their buildings need. And then I already said in January, we had John Spencer, but we also had Andrea Hoenig Spelt, who's an expert on co-teaching, that we brought in, especially with our English Learner Program and our general education teachers, on how they work together. And she's been into the district either in person or online through Skype and things five times this year with a lot of our staff. And then in March, our elementary staff doesn't take part in countywide, they did half-building based, and then we had our brand-new rollout of our social studies standards. Middle school, we've had building-based, and then we went to an online piece on how they would do their PLC refresh. And what we did over in my department is we created a variance of online activities for all of the PLCs to be able to participate in, so they could not only have some choice, but it would be differentiated for those that were kind of struggling to get it going, and then those that are exemplars as well. And then building-based and countywide. So with FIT this year, and we did have our big FIT retreat today, it was very well-attended and it was a great experience for everybody that was there. But again, we've gone to this differentiation and personalization piece that we work with their triads, and then we meet with them, and we create the professional development with them that they need at their building, which is sometimes meaning that we come over and present at faculty meetings, but more often, we're giving resources, Lee is giving them ideas, and then they are presenting that material, so that they, you know, if you have to teach it, you know it even better than if you're just a participant. Math fact fluency, every Friday without fail, the math coaches and I have sent out Math Fluency activities and their quick snapshots with activities that our staff can do. Sometimes we've even copied things, given them out, bought dice for them all, so that they're able to do this piece. And our middle school people were so excited about it, and some of it weighs in, that they're now getting all of our Math Fact Fluency emails and activities too. And then the online piece, I've already talked about our PLC refresh and some of our writing for elementary staff, that there was a smorgasbord of choices for people to go through and talk about with writing. And then we've done some middle school math training that we provided, if you like videos, here's this, if you want an article like this, here's an activity you go through, so that it's more personalized for them. Also this year with working on our new math lab, this is the book talk I did with all of our middle school math teachers, we started that over the summer, and then I've been meeting with each of the middle school math departments four times this year as we've made our way through our number talks matter. MTSS training, huge pieces coming up for elementary on Friday, and we have the middle school principals and psychologists and counselors and everybody in. Two weeks ago, we've changed a lot of our assessments for next year and how we're going to be using this, and then we've also created student support specialists, which will be MTSS coaches to help with that. That's not an additional cost to the budget, that's within what we've already done. And then we've been continuing our work with the reading teachers and the math coaches to make sure that they know about MTSS. I know Chris is going to talk about SEL and behavior, but that's an important component of MTSS as well. Micro credentials has rolled out. At the time that I put this together, we had 275 of the stacks in process, and we have 42 stacks completed by staff members.
Does that mean 42 teachers completed stacks, or?
There are a couple of people that may have gotten to the two that we're doing, but for the most part, that's individual teachers. And then want to switch to a little bit about principal professional development. So we're involved in a C grant through the RWE and through the federal government, and each of the principals that is involved in that has got $14,000 per school to work on professional development, or to buy materials, or to pay for guest teachers. With that, they also have had a coach from outside that has followed them through their day to help with time management, or involve them in their school improvement process. And then each of them have been going to days of training on cycles of inquiry, which is a more in-depth approach to problem analysis and a plan for their school improvement. We've added, those are the top two lines, are the schools we started with, then they called us and said, hey, we've got more schools that do want to do this. And just recently, in the last two weeks, they called us and they've been really happy with some of the things that they've been seeing, and now we're adding Monroe and Johnson as well to that. So if you add up $14,000 each with all of that, that's quite a bit of money that has pumped into the schools. Also with professional development, we've called, we've done what's expanding the team at all of our principal EC12 meetings, that Chris and Charlie and I and team, we've been working on to do that, and I'll talk about that in a little bit, but I do really want to add our evaluation discussions with our principals this year. We started out as a team, Chris, Charlie, and I, sitting down and meeting with each and every one of them on MTSS, on how they're doing with their school improvement plan. And it was a really great way to start off the year by kind of, we're a team and we're working on all of this together, and for us to talk about instruction. So back to the admin learning opportunity that I was talking about, here's what we've attempted to do at every single one of our EC12 meetings, that we wanted not only our FIT vision environment for students, and I've been talking about it for teachers, but how do we do that for principals, and amplify their voice, and grow that leadership capacity within them. So here are the topics that we've done every month, we're all the way through, we've not done May yet. But what it usually looks like is we've brought in a couple of principals, had a few meetings with them, worked with them on how they're going to present the topic with us, and then break it into small groups for them to have a discussion, or to look at a video, or to share ideas, both at the building application level and also what we could do as a district. And you'll see that a lot of these topics are exactly what we're working on in Vision 2022, so it's been a great time and kind of reminder of our process and our goals. Next year, so I'm going to switch over and talk a little bit about this, this is an organization that we're going to partner with, and what they do is they provide a lot of advice, data, just they comb through all kinds of research and best practices out there, and then put them into an easy avenue for us to look at and to access, and we're going to be using this next year probably as part of our EC12 principal meetings and professional development too. But I'm going to try to head you off, you're going to ask me what EAB stands for? It's nowhere on the website, so I actually called them today and it doesn't stand for anything. So EAB, there was, it used to stand for something, but you wouldn't tell me what it was, and then there was a court case, and now it doesn't stand for anything, but it's still EAB, so. Okay, it's EAB. And then institute days for next year, we've already had to, you know, process and get those things aligned, because we have lots that we need to do, and our buildings really in order to be planned, like I talked about with that FIT learning environment, and to get ahead of the game, so that we can coordinate everything, we have to have that finalized now, so they can start planning with their teams for next year. So as always, that opening day, we don't touch, that's building-based, they have a lot of things that they need to do. September, Jessica Leahy, Chris has brought that in for the gift of failure, where we have parents the night before, but then we'll have staff with middle school and our upper elementary folks the next day. High school has brought in some speakers too, and they're building-based. Then in November, elementary has their work day, but middle and high will be doing their Alice training for half of the day. And then in January, we'll flip that, and the elementaries will have their Alice training, and middle and high will have their work day. We do see that February 28th will be sessions again of a lot of choice, and in some of those building-based, they will have some prescriptive time on the topics that we've already addressed with our reading coaches and our math coaches, but they, we call it still building-based because it's at their buildings, and they're putting the tweaks and the final touches on those. All right, I was told to talk fast because we've got a long agenda. So here we go, do you have questions?
I just have a few.
Yeah.
Going back to the micro credentials, are we asking for feedback on those that are completing? And just to kind of get an idea of, are we giving them what they want and need, are we looking at making any changes in that for next year? And then of those 42, what were we anticipating? Did you have any idea as to how many we're going to participate this year? Is this like on track of what we were thinking, or more or less, or?
I see Dr. Slaggy and Manias will be up here, and I'm going to give that to him, but yes, we do have a professional growth committee that's been talking about quality and the feedback on that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Great question, so a few points to that. So the 42 micro credential stacks completed, remember a stack is three micro credentials, which is pretty extensive work and teacher time. So 42 stacks completes when the teacher completed all three of them and applied them within their classroom practice. So 275 are in process. Also deadline for those is October 1st of next year as well. So that 275 in process, 42 completed, I will tell you, I think there's good signs there. I will also tell you District 200, and this is a good thing, is in uncharted territory, right? We're pretty aggressive with our micro credentials, because we believe it's a learning opportunity that can be personalized for our staff, it offers another avenue for our staff to apply this practice, but we're also offering them extensively for our staff. So it's an opportunity that exists, but in the same breath, it's one opportunity amongst a broad range of professional learning opportunities, as well as, as you just saw, they're complete. Sorry, I want to answer your second question too, but did that spark another question?
Yeah, it did, go ahead, just say.
Second question was, do we have a group or a survey? We are putting out a survey to our staff members that have completed them and not completed them, we're working with the union on that, that'll have a professional growth meeting. And we're also looking at those that have successfully completed them to create inter-networks for our teachers, because there are some challenges that they face. This is, micro credentials are new, it's a new type of work, a new type of learning application. So both us and our teacher union, our teacher leaders want to have some support, some things.
So my other question is, is what about our specialists that are super specialized? Are we, do we have opportunities for them to be able to participate?
Yeah, great question. So as we initially rolled out the micro credentials, we looked at what are our correlations to FIT, SEL, and are they applicable to specialists? And in our first go-round, we thought that we had a pretty broad reach. Some of the challenges though, that we heard were for some of our specialists, especially our occupational therapists and our physical therapists, is that they didn't have as many offerings as our other teachers. And so one of the adjustments that we just made at our last professional growth meeting was to offer, instead of offer the micro credentials in individual stacks, which limits you to three in a group that all to be completed, we are opening it up as of July 1st, Dr. Cowan's HR department are working on logistics of it, where you will be able to mix and match any of the three. And what this does is it offers a broader range of our specialists, so they may pick one from one stack, one from another, and it offers them that flexibility that already exists really for our classroom teachers.
I also ask, would it be possible for us to see, or is there a way for us to see what the offerings are?
From micro credentials?
Yeah, and my next question would be, have there been some that are noticeably more popular than others, are you watching what it is, or gravitating towards?
Yes and yes, so first thing, yeah, we have an in-house district website for micro credentials, so we can certainly share that out with you to see the offerings and all the things that are accessible. And the second question is, yes, we are monitoring the ones that are being completed, we also monitor the ones that staff are having more difficulty with, we take that feedback in. And a part of that monitoring process is to say, do we want to continue to offer some, or do we want to look for options that are more desired by our teachers? So we'll do both, absolutely. And truly, all of our departments quite a part of that, because that backend monitoring and all that piece happens through Dr. Cowan's department.
Chris, what's the mix on the teachers, on who's taking the stacks or doing the micro credentials, have you tracked that or plotted that?
Yeah, so I would say that there is a, really a balance between high school, middle, and elementary, I don't see one standing out there. I think one of our larger challenges initially with micro credentials is really trying to have brought offerings to our specialists, so I would think you would see some lagging behind there, but I think we put some things in place that are going to make those offerings. But do I see a specific area that I would say is overwhelmingly being completed by Level? No, I think it's pretty good.
There were some economic assumptions we made when we were talking about this program. Do we know if we're on plan, undersubscribed, oversubscribed? Economically?
I'd have to go back and look at where we sat, I don't, if my memory serves me, we're probably a little bit under what we had anticipated in terms of economic impact just based on those completed, so I guess remember the economic is they completed, I think it's $500, that gets added to their salary for completion of the stack, and again, if memory serves me correct, I think we had projected a placeholder that was a little bit higher than where we will be if that number holds through at the end of the year.
We had a chat with the board the other day, and one of the students brought up the social media training for teachers. Do we have any micro credential for that?
Yeah, right now we don't have a micro credential that talks about specifically training them specifically on social media, however, I think that a lot of the micro credentials that are relative to both FIT, social, emotional, marine hit on that, because they don't really isolate social media, but they incorporate parts of that, because truth be told, social media, utilization of technology, internet, all those pieces are really how we work now. So do we have a specific one tied into social media? No, however, if you were to comb, so with every micro credential comes resources, research base, there may be videos that are applicable, all of them are backed by big, heavy research articles, you're going to find stuff on the effects of social media, appropriate usage, all those pieces, because we know that they have an impact on learning environment, has an impact on social, emotional work. But do we have a specific one on social media training or titled that? No, we haven't come across one.
Chris, at the IA speak conference in November, I went to a breakout session on micro credentialing, and there were a number of people there from other districts. Do we know of any other districts that are incorporating a micro credential program into their professional training?
Yes, there are a few, but they're taking smaller steps, right? So I know York 4115 is offering a few of them, so like one micro credential based around really what they as a district want to see their teachers accomplish. So that's really one avenue of going at it, and that's where a lot of places are at with it. Our philosophy is this is a broader offering to personalize learning for our staff, and an opportunity and an option, right? So we're trying to capture all of that, so in our case, we're offering more than any place that I know of. So there are places that are interesting to this, but it is a very new world.
Do we approve each, you know, each individual's choice? We don't, okay, because I think that was a concern that, you know, maybe everyone would take the same thing, and I assume then they will share some of those activities in their PLCs and that.
Yeah, Dr. Cowan's department receives all the pre-approvals for the micro credential stacks, and then on the backend receives any of the badges that come in that help them to monitor, and that gives us the data of how to monitor and even create a network of sharers and users for it. So yes, that process is.
And then one other question, back, I don't know, four, two, three years ago, we had the federal requirement to teach in a certain format, or, I can't think of the buzzword, but I know, you know, it was, you know, it was kind of a criticized program.
Common Core.
Common Core.
Oh.
That's gone. Is that, no, it's still in play? Okay.
We never adopted Common Core in its unilateral, without exception, and there was always some percentage of that, so when we adopted the Common Core English Language Arts, for instance, I did not think there was enough phonics piece behind that, so we worked with the committee to create our own standards in that area. And there were some pieces in math that we also, especially in the elementary and the middle school piece, did feel like made great chronological sense, and made it our own to those pieces. So yes, Common Core is still here, but it never was Common Core in its absoluteness and district to it.
Okay, so we modified it, and we're still in compliance with it?
Yes.
Because we have to be, and so on, okay? It hasn't set us back in any way that influenced. Okay, switching gears here, that one slide, example of online learning for staff, the first bullet point was PLC refresh, can you describe a little bit about what that looks like and how you go about doing that? I know you do a survey every year, and you try to get people's opinion about their view of the PLCs, and you share that with us, so thank you for that. But when you talk about a refresh, can you just describe a little bit?
So if you recall, not just this last February, but the February before that, we saw the middle school PLC process, the data didn't look so great. So I sat with the middle school principals and I said, we really need like a refresh, they hadn't been maybe giving it as much time or making sure that the new staff that had come in were involved in that. So I could actually even send you the online link that has all the different articles and videos that we put together, but it kind of starts out from the beginning, with your team self-assessed, do you already have rules for norms? If not, there's three different activities that will help get you there. Do you already have your common formative assessments made? If not, then here are three activities that you can choose to go in there. If you are already in the process of, and it keeps going down, like 22 more items, and we actually color-coded it so that staff could say, hey, we're in the red, this is not going well, you know, we need to revisit that, all the way to blue, that they're kind of exemplars and ahead of the curve. So what it is, is a self-assessment for teams to use, or their administrator could sit down with them if need be, and then gives them activities, articles, videos, resources to help them get where they want to go next. And we had such a, as you saw with the February data from middle school, that really caused an increase in the process from the staff perspective, so then I passed that out also to some of our high schools and pieces where we saw the data this year didn't look as stellar as we'd like it to be.
And one final question on the C grant?
Yes.
How, who drives that within the building? I mean, I see we have Wheaton-Norbitno, Wheaton-Montreal South, I mean, are they just different needs, or is there someone who initiates that and is more aggressive?
No, we get invited, so it's a federal grant, where they're looking and drawing some correlations in school improvement, where they were looking for schools with very specific demographics. So there were only some schools from the district that were invited into that, and you had to meet a certain demographic, and it also, there's people from all over Illinois that are involved in that, and sometimes they needed a school that has this percentage of low income, and sometimes they needed a school that didn't, you know, and they also needed to have principals that would be there for three to five years over the long haul, and they didn't want a brand-new principal necessarily. So there was a long list of criteria that they went through, and then chose which schools that they would invite.
So just to follow up on that, what is the desired outcome of that grant, or what do we get out of it other than $14,000?
So in addition to the $14,000, it's also a really in-depth process. process for developing school improvement plans and school improvement efforts called cycles of inquiry. And our principals are going through that. And then they also have a coach from outside the district that doesn't participate in the evaluations. There's very strict rules about what they can say to Chris or Charlie and I as they're coaching the principals and sitting down with them and helping them reflect about the process. And when you talk to our principals that are involved, they've found that to be very helpful. And it is causing them to really ask some really big questions about how to spend that money and getting in with staff and analyzing more of what's causing the problem as opposed to jumping and kind of putting a Band-Aid on it. So a lot of the hope for that is that we come out with a better school improvement process. And also, what we were already pleased to see with the elementary staff, they didn't just take the $14,000 and figure out what am I going to do here. The six elementary schools took some of their money and pooled that and brought in John Spencer and those types of things. So we are able to take some of that money and not only parcel it off to schools, but use it collectively to bring in some really great professional opportunities for the whole district.
One more piece I've added into that. So again, the premise behind it is how do you build stronger instructional leaders? And you, at least the premise of the grant and the study is it's in the combination of time management. So how do you work with principals to utilize structures in their building to free up time to attend to instructional leadership activities versus management-type activity? And then what do you do with that time? And what you do with the time is the cycles of inquiry training that really digs into what are the root causes of some of the instructional problems or needs you see, and then how do you fix that? And of course, there's the resource piece that sits behind it. And again, that's one more place where I will say that that was a countywide grant. A lot of our bigger counterparts across the county, based on kind of the timing of when that came to us, has kind of said, nah, we don't know enough, we're not going to jump into the fold. And as we went to, so I think, you know, Jim, your question, the schools were randomly selected to begin with. But as we went to those schools and truly said, we don't entirely know what this is going to entail, but we believe it's going to be good, and we believe it's going to bring some resource that's going to support professional learning. And our buildings all said, we'll give it a shot. And it really has turned out to be good. And that, Faith mentioned, $14,000, that's an annual resource allocation that actually carries over five years. So they're going to get that professional development money. So in total, that's going to be almost a half a million dollar financial support to District 200 alone over the next five years to really support that work and professional learning. And hopefully, we can turn some of what we're learning around, obviously, bring to the, what now are only seven of our buildings that are not a part of that process.
Then one question back to the micro credentials. So 275 people are registered already or in the process? That's about a quarter of our staff already. So, I mean, it looks like a low number, but just maybe in one year, that's not a bad kind of first shot out of the gate. And then the next, the question really is kind of a forward-looking thing because we can't measure it yet. But when we kind of created this model within our contract, the idea was, excuse me, that the teachers kind of take, bring that, bring it back to the schools for leadership decisions or back in their classroom? So do we have any thoughts or plans about how we're going to follow up? You know, once the stack is completed with those individual teachers to kind of measure and learn from how they're bringing it back to their school?
Either way.
I think in two forms. One, there's some components in the survey that ask for teacher leadership. We can talk about teacher leadership, pretty broad topic, right? Teacher leadership, one being, will you support other teachers as they take on micro credentials to spread that learning? We also have some strands that are being offered in specs that are being offered specifically on teacher leadership. And to me, one of the two greatest areas, it means our focus is coming out of our compensation group. It definitely focuses out of our professional growth team, which Faith leads. Teacher leadership in the area of professional learning communities. So when we think about the concept of PLCs, that's teacher leadership really at its highest level, because that's the teacher ownership piece. The other side that we want coming out of that is teacher leadership for professional learning. When our teachers are owning their own learning, there's more growth, more capacity being built, more efficacy being built collectively, which has the greatest influence on learning. So our monitoring piece allows us to get at that. But I think also, we have two strands where the micro credentials are geared that are going to naturally build capacity for PLCs and professional learning, naturally the goals of the teacher leadership strengths as they are. The other capacities further will be, will you mentor? We have some PLCs taking this on as well, and spending some of their work, looking at benefit as it pertains to, because we have some formative assessments and those pieces. So I don't know if that gets what you're asking.
Well, I'm not really, I guess at the core of what I'm asking is, I think the board was really excited about this change within the contract. And so at some point in time in the future, it would be great to hear back on the impact this had. Not just on the economic side, but is it fulfilling its intended consequences?
Just before the board meeting, I'm working on the offerings for week of learning for August. And I know that Bryce has reached out to some of the people that have done the micro credential piece to say, hey, are you going to offer a course? So there is some of that happening too.
One more, one more thing. I had the opportunity today, as I was walking out of the scholarship breakfast, to walk down and see the elevator. The elevator pitches at the Fit for Treat, and I'm still buzzing because I'm so excited about everything that I saw. But I love the autonomy that's there, that it was such a wide range of what people are feeling that they need within their building. So my question is, what happens next? Those triads have their vision that they'd like to bring back. How do we implement that?
So similarly to what we've done this year, when you saw the autonomy, you've got an elementary school that's this way, and a middle school is, you know, they're... And that's great, but it's all under the umbrella. They can all tie it into what it is for their staff learning or student learning for FIT. They'll brainstorm more of that. Some of that will evolve into school improvement plans that all of us will help monitor and support. But when they get very specific about what they want to do, we have FIT coaches, if you will, over here that meet as regularly as they want to, but at least four times a year to help with that process. And then I write some money into the budget so that there's guest teacher time. If it involves bringing in more staff or modeling for staff or sending staff to some training, they have some autonomy with some money to do those pieces as well. And then the principal evaluation piece involves how are you going, how are you working on your FIT pieces? So the next year's FIT district push is to blend all of that together, which we're really excited about. And then each building has, they can pick one other area, and that is woven into their school improvement plan, which we meet with them on at least four times a year.
Okay, any other questions on this top? All right, so Dr. Schuler suggested to me that we maybe flip at these two items. Since Mr. Lewis is here, does anybody have a problem if we do the business services first piece and then come back for the... So we're going to do the update on the phase four refunding first.
So Bob's getting his stuff ready. I'll introduce Bob Lewis, who I think the board knows. Bob has worked with the board through the previous three phases of what was a four-phase funding replan. And I think he's going to share with you this evening what I want to say, some good news around what phase four is going to look like in the savings, certainly to the district, but this will be the completion of the plan the board approved a while ago.
Thank you for having me here tonight to talk with you and share with you the information. We talked about the finance committee. As was mentioned, this is the fourth phase of the restructuring plan. But before we get into the details of that, just a quick snapshot of what's been going on in this LeBlanc market. This chart you've seen many times before, goes back to 2003. It shows you the gray area, the backwards federal funds rate, which is one of the key variables in determining interest rates, but not the only variable. Definitely has the most influence on shorter-term rates. The four lines you see there represent different points on the yield curve. When you hear interest rates, as a reminder, there's not just one interest rate, you have different markets. And within the market, you have short-term rates and long-term rates. So we show here the one, the five, the 10, and the 20-year. You can see that the one- and five-year follow fairly closely to what the Fed funds rate does. But the medium and long-term rates can follow their other variables as well. But let's instead focusing on the prior, so let's just focus on what's happened recently. You can see that rates have trended downwards since the end of last year and have continued on that path into this year. And that's because of a lot of reasons, but a lot of it has to do with the Federal Reserve's change in stance on the future of interest rates. In December, they said probably two, three more increases as we go into 2019, maybe some more in 2020. Then that came out the end of January, said, yeah, never mind, we're probably just going to keep them this way for the rest of the year. We're going to watch the data. And then primarily following what had been happening in the overall US economy, also the world economy. Talk of the trade issue with China, oil prices going up, a lot of different variables have caused them to wonder if the economy is perhaps slowing down. So that is good news for you when we enter into this fourth phase. One of the things I was concerned about when we did phase three is, well, what's going to happen to the interest rates between phase three and phase four? And we talked about doing some strategies, perhaps trying to lock those in, but ultimately felt that the price you would pay to lock those in in terms of a higher interest rate wasn't really worth doing that. So we decided to just play the market out, and that's worked in your favor, as you can see by the direction there. So let's look at the phasing of the plan. And as a reminder, municipal bonds are sold on a tax-exempt basis, usually meaning the investors in your bonds don't have to pay taxes on the interest you pay them. So they're willing to buy those bonds that are lower in interest rates. So you want to sell them tax-exempt whenever that you can. Also, municipal bonds are sold with a call provision, which essentially says for a period of time, you can't refinance these to a lower interest rate until you get within 90 days of that call provision. So while we like to compare refinancing to what we do on our home mortgages, there are some differences because municipal bond markets are more sophisticated than just refinancing your home. And one of the main things is that call provision. So when we had looked at the district's debt picture, it was an escalating debt structure that was going from the mid to high teens to all the way up to the almost $30 million before it was all said and done. And we were looking at, okay, what's the strategy to mitigate those future increases? And we talked about, well, you could do it all at one time and fix it today and get what I called at those meetings. I don't know if those who are here then remember me describing it as the pretty picture, you know, getting the structure that you wanted. Said, yeah, you can do that today, you can sell a lot of taxable bonds, have a lot of inefficient escrows, and it's going to cost you money to do that. Or we can be patient and do these in phases and be able to sell on a tax-exempt basis, shorten your escrows, likely save some money. We didn't know how much because we wouldn't know until you sold the bonds. Well, thus far, in the first three phases, which are completed, we've already reduced the debt service levies by $4.5 million. So that's savings that go to the taxpayer, doesn't benefit the operating funds of the district. But as we're preparing for this presentation, this is a new slide the finance committee gave you to see. I asked my team member, Jen Courier, who's been running these numbers since 2013, what did we estimate at that time, had you done a taxable restructuring and fixed it all at once and just put this to bed and get the structure that you wanted? What would have happened? And when you estimate at that time, that you would have increased your debt payments by $15 million because you had these inefficient escrows, you sold a lot of taxable bonds because of the IRS rules. Your final payment would have been extended to levy of 26. Well, we are now estimating, and we haven't sold phase four yet, so this is an estimate, but we should be somewhere close to this. And we hope, actually a little bit higher based on the fact that we're still being conservative, that your net debt service will end up after completion of all phases decreasing by somewhere in the neighborhood of $7.6 million. Hopefully enough of over $8 million. And your final payment is levy of 24. So we're paying it off two years sooner than had you not done the phase plan. And that swing is over $22 million between having, we're going to have an increase to now having a decrease. So you can see that the phase plan definitely benefited the district and especially its taxpayers. So phase four, you have the 2019 bonds, there's about $43.5 million that's callable. They're due in 2022 through 24, and they're callable on October 1st of 2019. So your 90-day window begins around July 1st that you can close on any bond issued. This bond is issued to refinance a variety of different bond series that are listed there. The average interest rate on this bond is over 5%. So you're going to significantly reduce this interest rate, it'll be way sub 3%. There are some complexities here with the outstanding escrow on the 2019 bonds. I won't bore you with all the details, but it has to do with the fact that the 2019 escrow will actually survive the 2019 bond. So we have to lower the yield on that escrow, which might factor into a penalty or estimate around $80,000. But that's already factored into the savings. But just wanted to be transparent, make sure you're aware that there is an additional complexity that we have to deal with on this financing. This is a summary of your outstanding principal by series. This is the series that will be refunded in this phase. Now notice you do have some other bonds that are callable here soon. You have this bond series callable in 2020. This one payment on this series is callable also in 2019. We looked at those and said, well, while we're doing this, should we look at refinancing those? And they really didn't provide any value to refinance. So it's likely that you won't exercise, especially on this one, you won't exercise a call option. I doubt you will exercise it on here. There's just not a lot of value in doing that. It just makes the bond issue larger for no benefit to the district. And then you have these other series. These are refinancings as part of phases one, two, and three. And then here are the lease certificates, lease certificates that you just sold for the early learning center, the new Jefferson. So this is our estimate for the savings. And you see a lot of variation from year to year, and that's because we're smoothing out the fluctuations. In a moment, we'll see what it looks like graphically. But just look at the total here. We're estimating this phase will reduce the overall levy by $3.1 million. The present value of that is higher, $3.8 million. And that's just because we're moving these payments around. Usually, present value is lower than this number, but it's just the fact that we're smoothing out these fluctuations if the present value number comes out to be higher. This is what the taxpayers will see in terms of a lower interest cost. Now, I do want to point out that we're using current market plus an additional 0.4%. If you don't, if we end up selling at current market, it's likely this number is going to approach to be somewhere near $4 million. So, but we want to be conservative for purposes of doing a planning for this financing. Last thing I want to point out here is this current bond is scheduled to, right here, you're extending the payment by one year over what was currently outstanding. So previously, when we had talked about this final phase and this plan, we thought we were going to be extending it two years. And because interest rates have been considerably lower than what we had anticipated throughout the plan by being conservative, and plus some slight modification to the final structure, we're actually only extending the final payment of the district's outstanding debt by one year to eliminate this peak. Now, this starts with levy of 17. The plan actually started with probably a payment that was about at this level when we began. And we went to having roughly million-dollar annual increases, and then with the goal of leveling it off right around $20 million per year, and then keep it at that or lower. So this gray area is what would have happened if not instituting the final phases of three and four. These blue bars with the orange is what we're reflecting, is what will likely, the picture's going to look like post the sale of phase four. You'll maintain your payment right around $20 million with a drop-off of $1,008 around these two years, and a subsequent drop-off of $2.5 million this year. These drop-offs will provide the district future flexibility to address potential needs, or if those needs don't need to be addressed, it will be a reduction in the overall levy for your taxpayers. So instead of having these increases like you would have had, your taxpayers are actually facing reductions in the overall bond interest levy. Unless a future board decides to perhaps take advantage of, and I'm referring to me at that time, but if that would take subsequent board action, but even if the board took advantage of that, it wouldn't increase the payment above this amount. But there's nothing in... But there's nothing in that set that that action would occur. We just want to make sure we maintain that flexibility while at the same time try to get as much savings as possible. And you can see right here, the final payment on the gray was going to be in '23. The final payment is now in '24, just one year later. The timeline is the presentation tonight. We would deliver a credit rating presentation to the standard of course. You were just upgraded recently. I'm trying to recall, you double A or double A plus?
Double A plus.
Double A plus, which is an excellent criteria, you're one notch below triple A. The board would consider approval of a parameters resolution on May 8th, as it has with all the other phases. That parameters resolution allows us to proceed subject to meeting certain parameters as it suggests, like a maximum principal amount, minimum savings target, and levies that meet that plan. And that delegates the authority to approve the sale to the board president and to one administrative member, either the superintendent, assistant superintendent of finance. But at least one board member has to sign off on it, and then they have the obligation to report the final results back to the full board. We get the credit rating late May. We anticipate a sale approximately July 11th. These dates are placeholders for now. It could fluctuate a year or two depending on whether we're ready to sell. I also take a second look at what economic reports are coming out in that window. Do we want to avoid a certain economic announcement? Instead, they can shift a couple of days one way or the other. And then we anticipate a closing date approximately July 9th. That's in that 90-day call window. Once the bonds are sold, you've locked it in. We'll be able to report what the final savings are. We allow for the time period between the sale date and the closing date. Ample time to sign the closing documents. As you know, we have the Fourth of July holiday in there, so sometimes getting forward officer signatures can be a challenge. So we provide ample opportunity between those two days. So that's it for, oh, the appendix just has some detail in case you were interested. Any questions for me?
Two quick questions. And one of these charts you had on the Page Seven, Slide Seven. That one, you put the box around the lease certificates?
Yes.
So that's part of our debt. Is that also reflected in this chart?
No, that's not reflected in there because there's not a separate tax levy to pay it. The lease certificate says the commitment list to the public was not to be paid from taxes. I believe the plans to pay it from general state aid.
And so, and then the second question, just to clarify what I think on that. So when we say theoretically $7.6 million, that's, that doesn't go to our operating budget. That's not money we have available. That's purely money that we don't have to ask for in the future as part of our debt service.
That is correct.
So it's really just tax avoidance, not operational savings to the district.
Exactly. So that's the difference between this gray area and these bars. If you were to figure out the geometry there, the difference between those two, plus what you've already achieved in savings prior to 2017.
Just speaking on behalf of the Finance Committee, you know, basically, there's a couple of issues here. Number one, on this chart, you can see that it extends the payment period by one year in what was originally planned, but that 3.1 savings is a real number. So the total payments under the gray line, if you want to call it that, would have been 3.1 million higher even though we're going out one more year and paying one more year's interest in theory. But the rate drop causes that saving. So that's sometimes confusing with people. We did, as a committee, look at probably four different alternatives. This one tends to mirror, if you look at the bars that are kind of flat up there, it tends to mirror our time that we're gearing up on our operating budget for the Sherman Durgus slash Gambiani funding. You know, I've got to maintain that, by the way. But, you know, so that as we gear up and we start consuming fund balance, we will have that, you know, those years that start getting stressed are the, you know, the, what years would that be, 2022, 2122? So, you know, that's why we concluded that that drop in those years, you know, would be beneficial. We looked at one that was kind of a straight line and then just a total drop-off. And we felt that the benefit or that maybe some additional savings of interest was not adequate enough to consider that alternative. So, you know, this is, you know, culmination now of, what, six years, I guess it would be, process that started many years ago. And these are real number savings, which are important. And, you know, we've been fortunate that the rates have dropped and all the things that have, you know, the perfect storm for us has happened. And I want to thank Jim and, you know, our predecessors on the Finance Committee to, you know, to achieve these over the cycle of times.
Well, and one of the other things, I'll say now, which benefit from the interest rates, go back when we began this process and laid out potential benefits of phasing, you know, improved perception of the Illinois. I think it got worse, but it has gotten better. And I also said you'd have the opportunity during that time to improve your own credit profile. You went from a double A minus when we started to now double A plus. So that means lower interest rates as well versus had you sold it all at one time.
And why did that happen? It was because of the fiscal responsibility that we've, as a district, taken on over these years and, you know, balanced the budget, build up fund balance, and all the things that go along with it. So, you know, that's why we're, interest rate is as low as it is. Appreciate it.
If I might take a point of personal privilege here. This is quite a bit different financial picture than when Jim and I first came on board in the spring of 2011. And I want to, as Jim Matheson mentioned, I want to thank those on the Finance Committee over the last eight years who worked on this. They've done a great job. I want to thank Bob and PMA for strong advice they have given us and the good advice they've given us. I'd like to thank the economy, I guess, as well. And I also want to thank Bill and Jeff and your predecessor, Brian Harris, who implemented this program initially. We carried it through, kept track of it. And I think we, as a board, have done a great job in putting this district in sound financial footing. So with this strong administration leadership, the good work of the committee, and good financial advice from PMA, and a good economy, I think we've done the right thing for this district.
And I think another point, Jim touched on it, and as you, Bob, this decision or this approach to the overall refinancing, specifically Phase Four, we did have four different scenarios. We've mulled them over on many different meetings and came to this, to this point. But I think the other thing it does is it gives flexibility to the future boards, right? And that was a key element for us. We didn't want to make a decision that was going to put them in a box and not give them some flexibility based on a dynamic to the economy or the changing landscape of the finances. And so in addition to enjoying the benefits from a financial standpoint, it also ensures the flexibility for the future boards going forward.
That is correct.
I saw Jim looking at his Forecast Five deck over there. Does that change our assumptions in that model or we built those assumptions in already?
This is separate. This is mostly what you see in the Forecast is our operating budget. This is outside of our operating budget.
So in 2021, we won't have any change to our operating budget as a result of this plan?
It'll change the overall tax rate that we assess against the community, if you want to call it that.
So the revenue, yeah.
Well, we have two components to our levy. One is operating, and one is debt service. In theory, in the year 2025, there will be no more debt if this were to maintain itself. And so instead of levying $20 million, give or take, in those years, we will not need to do that assuming there's no more debt. Now, that's a big assumption, but the point is operationally, we'll not be affected by this. And that's why, again, because of the operational approach on those lease payments, they're not on this chart either. Those are, again, outside. That comes out of the, you know, the non-debt service money.
So where I was headed is a lot of good news, a lot of fantastic strategic financial planning work. We still have issues we have to face in or out of your side. You know, not to be in the wet blanket, but just a point.
You don't, but I think it's a great point, but that was part of the thought around this. So again, if you actually laid out, so I'll take the board back to, if you go back to, I think, the spreadsheet that you were looking at when we first started to talk about that kind of ramped-up plan to funding for Sherman Durgus, right, we're drawing down fund balance and do that. If you look at the debt service payments that were on that, they're actually a little different than the way that this structure sits. So we were, one concept you were looking at, you would have, you would have perhaps immediately saw a little decrease in that debt service payment, but then it was flat for four years. And then another drop and flat for a couple of years. But two things different. One, it went all the way out to 2025. So by using this model, we're actually taking a whole year off of what would have been debt service, right, for the community. But two, to your point, this gives a future board two windows of time where as you're funding that increase to Sherman Durgus, bottom line is you're right, right? We forecasted a couple of places where we've got to make some adjustments in the budget and leave that we can, but I don't know for sure what the future's going to hold. And so the reality is if the future looks different than it does now, and that's at a stress point that's just not comfortable for this board or a future board, you have some windows of time where you could take advantage of other tools that would bring some funding in to support capital projects if you needed to pull a little relief valve off of the operating rate. So I think those are those two components. This maximizes savings, no doubt about it. But by not just kind of having a flat line, you know, that so if you didn't do that and then two years out, ran into a problem and a future board decided we needed to use some debt service extension base, well, then you're increasing that bond and interest levy, right? You're increasing taxes versus here, you've got some drop points where it could either be a relief to the taxpayer or if you needed to take advantage of some of those tools, you can do it at a flat, right, flat line value. So, so again, I think it's a great, I struggled a little bit as we were working through, I think, some of this, but I think this is a great kind of future look that saves money and gives, I think, future boards. And again, it kind of works in a two-year cycle. And as we've been talking about it, our board's kind of operated in a two-year cycle. Every two years, you've got a different composition of this board. And, you know, I think that board ought to have some ability to kind of determine what works the best as you move forward within the confines, I think, of this plan.
Okay, anything else? So there will be an actual item on the menu agenda to approve the parameters. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, good. Back to social learning.
All right. Really excited to talk about social-emotional learning for an extended amount of time or more than I normally do at our Board of Education this night.
I'm going to get Tim next.
Yeah. On your, in front of you, what you'll see is a larger piece here. This is our social-emotional learning framework that we've developed this year. I am going to do reference in this throughout. So we'll interact with the slides that we're going to show you. So for our time together tonight, really want to bring you up to speed on where we're at with our work in regards to social-emotional learning. So four areas that we're going to cover. First, we're going to discuss why we've chosen to take on a framework instead of addressing social-emotional learning through one individualized program, right? Second thing, and the majority of our time is going to be spent on what is our SEL framework? And why is each component in here essential to our current and future work in relation to social-emotional learning? So that's really going to be the learning opportunity here as well. And a few of you have been a part of that learning opportunity. Many of you have not, so we really wanted to spend a good portion of our time on that second piece. What is our SEL framework and why is it an essential component? The third part are what are our initial priorities? What are the work, what's the work that's in front of our SEL teams, our principals, and our schools now and in the future? And then fourth, and a nice tie-in to Phase Initial Presentation is, what does our professional learning plan look like for 2019, 2020? As we have that team going through, you'll see some of it. So first of all, just a definition of what is social-emotional learning. As we go around and present the framework to all of our buildings, the first question we ask is what is SEL? And you get a wide range of answers. And I will tell you, I have not had one incorrect answer yet around social-emotional learning. And the reason why that is, is it is such a broad, vast, important topic that really it covers a lot of areas. Few facts about social-emotional learning though. One, the literature and the research is really clear. It's essential to school life success. Our educational research tells us that, but also our future work research tells us that as well. Two, social-emotional skills are evolving in us at all times. They change the evidence. So like a math standard, unlike a math standard where you reach mastery or success, right? We never fully meet that threshold, right? It evolves in us at all time. But for our teachers and for our students, social-emotional learning skills need to be taught or then learned by our students, right? But more importantly, they need the experience through the experiences we get in the classroom and outside of the classroom in our schools, in our schools. And that's how they're built. And then all of our employees, no matter what you teach, from chemistry to working in the cafeteria, to our instructional assistants, to our principals, to our senior leadership team, any member within our district is responsible for teaching social-emotional learning. And we want that message very clear for all of our staff members. So first part that I said I would cover is why build a framework instead of just taking on one curriculum? So there are many curriculums that address the social-emotional learning needs of our kids, okay? And truth be told, they're a part of our current practices and future practices for social-emotional learning. However, one size, one curriculum doesn't meet the need of social-emotional learning. And so truthfully, building a framework allows us really three key pieces. First, and maybe most importantly to start is, we need and now have a common vision and definition of what social-emotional learning is, right? So it provides the guardrails, right? The common vision, the common definition, the common framework. Two, building a framework allows us to recognize the great work already happening in our schools. So in relation to the components that we've identified within our framework, we are able to identify a lot of successes already happening in relation to this work. And then three, in our leadership structure and our leadership practices, we operate within a tight loose framework, right? And what that means is we certainly have high expectations around any of the practices or the initiatives that we take on in our work. But we also know that our schools need autonomy and adaptability and flexibility to meet the needs of their students, meet the needs of their staff, and to prioritize that work, right? And a framework allows you to do that. So the process for building a framework, starting back in August, in September, we got input from a lot of different pieces. Our principals, our social-emotional learning teams comprised of 30 people at the EC5 level, 30 people at the 6 through 12 level, representatives of teachers, psychologists, guidance counselors, social workers, principals, assistant principals, all of our key departments. And we started with the question, what is social-emotional learning, right? And the answers were broad, they were vast, right? But we came to five components that you see on relationships, mindset, learning, emotional wellness, and behavioral wellness. Once we identified and solidified those components, we developed a belief statement for each component. That belief statement is not only backed by common practice or best practice and research, but it's also backed by what we believe and what we really want to hold to and will drive our current work, our future work. Third step was then to do a success inventory. So when we looked in relation to the five components you see in front of you, every school completed what we call a success inventory and really said, what are the great things we're already doing in relation to these practices? The reason we did that is we wanted to start with a strength-based mindset and allow us to see the good things that are happening and then prioritize from there. That allowed us to identify our priorities in practice. It also allowed us to identify our needs district-wide, school-wide. And from there, we've identified resources and training. And we're at the point now where we are not only developing programming and training, right? And I'll finish with that. What are our current priorities and what is the training plan? We're planning our future work, but that work's already started. And that first step of that is an SEL framework training at all 20 of our schools, which is currently happening right in all of our schools. So that's our framework process and why we build a framework over. a framework over one curriculum.
Yes, may I ask a question?
Yep.
On uh step three um I'm sorry yeah step step three how did you identify what what defined a successful practice?
Absolutely um so we had our SCL teams and our principals we clearly defined each of these components right and then said how are we meeting the needs of these components in our school and are we getting positive outcomes either from a student achievement piece are we getting a positive outcome from lower discipline referrals are we getting a positive outcome from attendance are we getting a positive outcome there's all a variety of outcomes that could come from that I think on the other end of that too some of that was just backed by we believe that this is a good program the majority of our teachers do through either formal or informal survey survey data as well right so um I think there was a blend of quantitative data and qualitative data.
Thank you. I have a question on that before but hey I I just want to understand I'm a I'm gonna pretend for a minute I'm a middle school student and I go to school today and I'm how has my life differed because of SEL as compared if we didn't have it how does it come down to the students' day-to-day life?
Yeah, absolutely well I hope to paint a really clear picture for you for that for you here but I will tell you uh without SEL I don't have an adult or a teacher that cares about me I don't have an adult or a teacher that cares about my learning without SEL I don't believe that I can grow and learn at really high levels I don't have a teacher that believes that I can grow and learn at really high levels without SEL I have received no instruction no connection on self-management self-awareness building relationship skills demonstrating empathy any of these pieces that are essential to my current success and future life success without SEL I haven't been taught how to behave in school I haven't taught what it looks like to be successful I haven't shared in successes with others I haven't participated in co-curriculars I could go on and on and on about the impacts of social emotional learning and really the correlation to learning as a part of our framework as well because without SEL I'm not engaged in learning I'm not engaged in contextualized learning part of our fifth framework I'm not engaged in any of those really high-level pieces servicing so all those pieces we want to recognize we're doing good but we also want to prioritize and get better so that's a long-winded answer but I hope to paint a picture here for you.
Yeah, I guess what I'm hearing if I were to generalize what you just said is is that it's giving students the confident and confidence and supporting that confidence to proceed perform though is that a kind of a definition of that I it's a little vague to me is what I'm getting at and I just you know it sounds as though that that seems to be what I just understood you to say.
I think that's the all bills definitely it is a fair statement I would absolutely say that is social emotional learning.
Okay, cuz other schools teach indirectly and they try to do that obviously it seems like we have a much more advanced program is that a fair statement?
I hope that it is.
Right, that's my point and so when you use those extremes you were saying if we didn't have it but I mean other schools don't have the extreme we have so I'm trying to adjust that or understand that how this is gonna make our district so much better because.
I I think that's gonna be really clear when Chris keeps moving forward hang on to that thought and I think that's kind of what he's gonna do tonight is unpack each of those five areas in a way that makes it.
Perfect.
Great, so five areas right that we're gonna focus on and each component of these is really really important in our current and future work so five areas that that we have in our framework and I'm gonna go through each one and then I'm gonna either show you a clip or a piece of research that supports that to even draw to more light so our first component and I highlighted this last time at our social emotional learning update is relationships um we believe that meaningful teacher-student relationships build school connectedness and when we define this when we define this for the sake of our in our framework the first meaning of what this is it means that I have a trusted adult that cares about me and I have a trusted adult that cares about my learning the reason this is important is when you have that you have what you call school connectedness Center for Disease Control uh research report on this is very very clear school connectedness was found to be the strongest protective factor for both boys and girls to decrease substance abuse school absenteeism early sexual initiation violence and risk of unintentional injury in the same study school connectedness was second in importance after family connectedness as a protective factor against emotional distress disorder eating and suicidal ideation attempts for us to not prioritize high-performance relationships school connectedness for our kids would be negligent to not include that in our social emotional learning framework it's an absolute essential of our work we do a really really good job at it but as I go through and identify priorities I'm gonna even outline how we're gonna work next year and this year to be really deliberate around that practice so first component of social emotional learning is relationships that means I have an adult in the building that cares about me and cares about my learning and when I have that all my emotional distressors decrease academic achievement increases safety increases okay? Second component of our framework is mindset okay we look at mindset through two lenses the first lines of what mindset is is that our teachers believe that all students can learn at high levels when they take on challenges when they set high standards for themselves when they persevere through challenges this is backed by Carol Dweck's research many of you may have heard of growth mindset um if if this research wasn't true we would all be crawling but instead we're all walking the reason we're all walking is because we crawled we struggled we kept fighting we got stronger and stronger and stronger soon we learned to walk just like talking as well so the research behind it is when we work hard we take on challenges we get better right the key impact for that though the second lens is our student mindset right so our student mindset is getting our students to believe that through taking on challenges persevering working hard all these different pieces their brains actually get stronger right they almost grow like a muscle um and their skills improve um the reason this is important is really two or threefold one when our kids leave fifth grade eighth grade twelfth grade we want them to have hope for the future right having a growth mindset is a part of that equation believing that you can get better having hope for the future um the second piece really is that correlation to future success right we know that job markets are changing um we know that we need people leaving our schools that are cognitively flexible and adaptable and willing learners because their jobs are going to change over the course of of their careers so that mindset piece plays into it as well I'm gonna play a video here that gets at mindset through the concept of grit and perseverance some of you may have seen this but um I'll let Angela Duckworth take it right here.
When I was twenty-seven years old I left a very demanding job in management consulting for a job that was even more demanding teaching I went to teach seventh graders math in the New York City public schools and like any teacher I made quizzes and tests I gave out homework assignments when the work came back I calculated grades what struck me was that IQ was not the only difference between my best and my worst students some of my strongest performers did not have stratospheric IQ scores some of my smartest kids weren't doing so well and that got me thinking kinds of things you need to learn in seventh grade math sure they're hard ratios decimals the area of a parallelogram but these concepts are not impossible and I was firmly convinced that every one of my students could learn the material if they'd worked hard and long enough after several more years of teaching I came to the conclusion that what we need in education is a much better understanding of students and learning from a motivational perspective from a psychological perspective in education the one thing we know how to measure best is IQ but what if doing well in school and in life depends on much more than your ability to learn quickly and easily so I left the classroom and I went to graduate school to become a psychologist I started studying kids and adults in all kinds of super challenging settings and in every study my question was who is successful here and why my research team and I went to West Point Military Academy we tried to predict which cadets would stay in military training and which would drop out we went to the National Spelling Bee and tried to predict which children would advance farthest in competition we studied rookie teachers working in really tough neighborhoods asking which teachers are still gonna be here in teaching by the end of the school year and of those who will be the most effective at improving learning outcomes for their students we partnered with private companies asking which of these salespeople is gonna keep their jobs and who's gonna earn the most money in all those very different contexts one characteristic emerged as a significant predictor of success and it wasn't social intelligence it wasn't good looks physical health and it wasn't IQ it was grit grit is passion and perseverance for very long-term goals grit is having stamina grit is sticking with your future day in day out not just for the week not just for the month but for years and working really hard to make that future a reality grit is living life like it's a marathon not a sprint a few years ago I started studying grit in the Chicago Public Schools I asked thousands of high school juniors to take grit questionnaires and then waited around more than a year to see who would graduate turns out that grittier kids were significantly more likely to graduate even when I matched them on every characteristic I could measure things like family income standardized achievement test scores even how safe kids felt when they were at school so it's not just at West Point or the National Spelling Bee that grit matters it's also in school especially for kids at risk for dropping out to me the most shocking thing about grit is how little we know how little science knows about building it every day parents and teachers ask me how do I build grit in kids what do I do to teach kids a solid work ethic how do I keep them motivated for the long run the honest answer is I don't know what I do know is that talent doesn't make you gritty our data show very clearly that there are many talented individuals who simply do not follow through on their commitments in fact in our data grit is usually unrelated or even inversely related to measures of talent so far the best idea I've heard about building grit in kids is something called growth mindset this is an idea developed at Stanford University by Carol Dweck and it is the belief that the ability to learn is not fixed that it can change with your effort Dr. Dweck has shown that when kids read and learn about the brain and how it changes and grows in response to challenge they're much more likely to persevere when they fail because they don't believe that failure is a permanent condition so growth mindset is a great idea for building grit but we need more and that's where I'm gonna end my remarks because that's where we are that's the work that stands before us we need to take our best ideas our strongest intuitions and we need to test them we need to measure whether we've been successful and we have to be willing to fail to be wrong to start over again with lessons learned in other words we need to be gritty about getting our kids grittier thank you.
Wonderful, so first component is relationships second component mindset number purposes to understand each of these components in their in their context and why they're essential hopefully Angela Duckworth do some of those connections between mindset and the belief and how that correlates to success okay third component of our framework in the heart of our framework right in the center there is learning okay what do we mean by learn? Well, State of Illinois has social emotional learning standards right and those are certainly important those are some of those competencies that I referred to before self-management self-awareness ability to build relationships ability to have the thought is all these different pieces right and those are really really important but when we talk about learning in the context of of social and emotional skills we believe that this happens in a variety of contexts and settings so one way is through direct teaching and modeling of skills right but it also happens in a lot of other areas through problem-based project-based contextualized learning through service learning many of the components that we just worked on today in our fit work aligned right into the heart of this learning really engaging learning connects kids to school it also happens through the application of skills in co-curriculars and service learning um this is uh really clear if you look at the redefining ready framework that's a link on there right here that tells us not only is GPA important or SAT or ACT score but when our kids are involved in co-curriculars or service learning their ability to be successful in college and beyond college there's a there's a there's a strong correlation there so learning is not only important for the SEL skills in the direct teaching of the skills but also in the application of the skills and the experiences that we provide our kids um there's a video here that I I hope to show for you too to show the different components of social emotional learning and this is actually an in-house video of 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 some of the things happening in our schools that exemplify social emotional learning. So as we go through each component again ideas to draw context understanding of what each one is in the relation to social emotional skills and learning so then through relationships mindset and learning our fourth fourth component is emotional wellness this is really our mental health strength um so what is emotional wellness right this is really the emotional stability the mental health of our students these are proactive instructional practices on mental health and wellness these are also our responsive practices for students that are at risk at risk of harming others at risk of harming themselves um but at a general level level this is also about being informed about the trauma that many of our students experience in the impact that that has on them in school the greatest strategy for ensuring the emotional stability of our kids in schools is a relationship with a caring adult in our school who just spent three days at a child-informed practice training that gets at how do you ensure the emotional well-being of your students and the number one strategy is get students connected then they're safe so assure that they're safe and regulated but it starts with connection but it is really really hard to be connected if you don't start with empathy and understanding that adverse experiences at home do affect our students to play that video out I'm gonna show you a clip here that comes from the medical field but you'll see the correlation to the educational field as it ties up.
What does your parents divorce have to do with your risk for heart disease if your mother had a drinking problem when you were growing up are you more likely to suffer from depression as an adult here's what you should know about ACEs ACEs stand for adverse childhood experiences extremely stressful events that can happen to a child growing up some experiences are so stressful that they can alter brain development as well as the immune system increasing the risk of lifelong health and social problems in adulthood. immune system, increasing the risk of lifelong health and social problems in adulthood. The term comes from the Adverse Childhood Experiences Study, landmark research that shed new light on the root cause of everything from stroke and liver disease to substance abuse and mental illness. In the late 1990s, an epidemiologist from the Centers for Disease Control and a preventive medicine doctor at Kaiser Permanente set out to understand the association between childhood experience and lifelong health. They asked over 17,000 people in the Kaiser Health Plan in San Diego about their health history, as well as difficult questions about their experiences growing up. Anda and Felitti tallied up 10 different kinds of adversity in this largely middle-class and college-educated population. They were stunned to see how common ACEs were. 21% of all respondents were sexually abused as children. 19% grew up with someone who suffered mental illness. 28% had been physically abused. And two out of three respondents had experienced at least one ACE. The researchers next looked at how someone's ACE score, or the number of adversities they experienced, related to a wide array of serious health and social problems. They saw that the more ACEs someone had, the greater their risk for poor outcomes compared with someone with no ACEs. Someone with an ACE score of four had twice the risk of heart disease and cancer. Someone with an ACE score of five had an eight times greater chance of being an alcoholic. And those with an ACE score of six or more, on average, died 20 years earlier. With every major problem they looked at in the ACE study, the risk went up for each additional adverse experience in childhood. As Dr. Robert Anda says, "What's predictable is preventable." It's important to remember that ACEs are not destiny. ACEs are a tool for understanding the health of a population as a whole. For individuals, an ACE score can be a tool for understanding their own risk for health and social problems, empower them to make changes for themselves and their children. ACEs tend to get passed down from generation to generation and are common across all income levels, races, and cultures. But increasingly, people of all different professions and backgrounds are coming together to discuss how ACEs affect their communities. They're finding new ways to treat and prevent ACEs. Many doctors are starting to screen their patients for ACEs as part of their medical history. More schools are becoming trauma-informed, considering the source of problem behavior when disciplining their students instead of immediately suspending or expelling them. To learn more about interrupting the cycle of adversity and improving health and well-being for the next generation, please visit kpjrfilms.co.
So when we think about our emotional wellness strand, right? The assumption is that many of our students have had adverse experiences, right? And so that trauma can affect behavior, but it also affects ability to learn. And so you have to start with connection and personalization to get over that barrier. But even before that, you have to start with that understanding of the adverse experience. Tie to emotional wellness, though, is behavior wellness, right? So behavior wellness, this is really starting from a school perspective, having a safe school environment, having a school environment that has school-wide guidelines for its success. What does it mean to be successful in the hallways, in the bathroom, in the cafeteria, on the bus? And then having that translate to our classrooms, a well-managed classroom, a classroom where there's clear and high expectations. It also means that we create clear expectations where we're providing positive and corrective feedback around behavior, because that's how you actually shape behavior. One of the ways to shape behavior is through a ratio of positive interactions. So behavior experts recommend a three-to-one positive-to-negative or corrective interaction. And one of the challenges that we are putting out in front of all of our schools is to be a three-to-one school. So for every student to have three positive interactions with adults as compared to every one corrective interaction. That's just a part of shaping behavior as we think about it in the behavior wellness strand. Why is this important? When our classrooms are well-managed, our kids learn more, right? And our kids are happier. When our classrooms and schools are safe places, kids are better able to be secure and learn. Dr. Rades-Rick is going to talk about what the positive interaction ratio is here. I think he explains it really well. This will be our final video before we go into our professional learning plan tied to the SEL framework.
The three-to-one ratio is basically, am I paying more attention to positive behavior or am I paying more attention to negative behavior? Now, that's an important distinction, because many people think you're talking about nice things teachers do versus mean things that they do or something else. Let's take the belittlement off the table and just assume that is not in a teacher's repertoire. So we're not even talking about the negatives having anything to do with that. The negatives are any time I am having to pay attention to misbehavior that I consider to be negative misbehavior, I'm trying to use my interaction to shape you back to either following my rules or meeting my procedures or whatever they happen to be. And I'm basically saying that that negative may need to have been done, because you may need that information right now. But I'm also saying, in part, what I have just communicated to this child is, one way to get my attention is to do something that annoys me. So I want to make sure that I buttress against that possibility by you also saying it is actually easier to get my attention and more satisfying and a better kind of attention to get attention from me when you're exhibiting pro-social behaviors. So that includes everything from like, if I had to correct you right before you left my class today, but I see you later in the hall and you're not even coming to my class, but I say, "Devon, very good to see you. Having a good afternoon?" There I am at a one-to-one with that kid, where that kid is saying, okay, he did correct my behavior, he said I need to be doing X or Y, but also he doesn't seem to hold a grudge, just is saying, "Hey, good afternoon, Devon. Yeah, how are you doing?" Has communicated. Where, at the very least, we're back to even. The next day, when you're walking into my class, I say, "Hey, Devon, good to see you today. How are you?" That's two, because it's two times that I've interacted with you when you were not engaged in misbehavior. Neither of them, in this particular case, involve praise, but they're two demonstrations that you don't need to screw up or annoy me to be noticed by me. And then if a little bit later in class, I get the class engaged in an independent work period, and I just come over and I just look at the quality of your work and I just say, "Hey, it looks like you're doing great. Please let me know if you have any questions." That just acknowledges that I noticed your on-task behavior, and that puts me at three-to-one. The three-to-one is more conservative than most behavioral experts suggest, so I encourage you to think about that as a minimum. But it's basically, you want every kid to see, all of the adults in this school are much more interested in capitalizing on and solidifying strength than they are just trying to catch weakness. If I'm not careful, I can end up paying so much attention to misbehavior that my kids who are starved for attention find. If I do what this guy wants, he doesn't even notice I'm here. But if I annoy him, I can get his attention like that. I definitely want to avoid that. But I want all of my kids to say, "I noticed their strengths." And that is done by paying attention to their positive behavior. Something I didn't mention with the group today but should have is, with secondary teachers, some kids that they really have to watch for with this are the average kids. Because the average kids may never be causing me problems, which may never prompt, oh, I need to pay more positive attention to this kid. But there are also kids that can potentially just fade into the woodwork completely and remain completely unnoticed by me. So if you're never causing problems in class, but your abilities may not be outstanding, I at the very least need to be able to notice when I see you putting a little bit of extra effort into something, where the quality of your work is a little bit better, or the courage to participate a little bit more, I need to let you know that I noticed that effort.
So again, the second part of this was, and then really the heart of this was, what are the components of social-emotional learning and why are they essentially what they look So, when we take that framework, we've done all the steps that we've kind of talked about. What are our priorities? Where does our work lie right now, as we're sitting here? So we have a K-5 SEL team comprised of about 30 representatives, and a 6-12 SEL team, really, really strong teams. And their role is to build resources and capacity for all of our schools. So at the elementary level, three focus areas, three resources that they're building. One, in the relationships piece. They have developed a resource that allows our schools to be very deliberate about ensuring every student having a meaningful relationship. What does that mean? There's a student voice component, right? So it's literally a survey question that asks you, "Do you have a trusted adult who is that?" But there's also an instructional component that goes with it, because we know for elementary students, we need to define what a relationship is and give purpose and context to that. There's also follow-up structures for our students that are not feeling that they have a trusted adult, right? That priority is actually happening at K-5 and 6-12. Just to summarize how that priority weighs out in our work, and I'll get to our professional learning plan, next September, all 20 of our buildings will come to a training. At the elementary level, our principals are able to bring five staff members. At the middle school level, our principals are able to bring eight staff members. At the high school level, our principals will be bringing 10 staff members. It'll be a day-long training in the first week of September focused around the use of this tool, but also focused around various structures for ensuring high-performance relationships and school connectedness in your school. So first priority is relationships. We have resource, a resource that's been built, and we have a full-day training being planned. So when you even think about resources, time and release of teachers is an important resource. In that first week, even as we come back, we'll be releasing a lot of staff members to come to this training to build capacity. Another priority at the elementary level in the learning strand, we're currently adjusting our learner characteristics to reflect the social-emotional learning standards. So we do have learner characteristics that we are keeping, but there are also some key SEL standards, right, that we want to report back to parents, that we are directly teaching at the elementary level. That rollout will be in 2020, but that development of the training around that is happening right now, the adjustment and the report cards happening right now. The behavior wellness strand, if you look at the third one there for elementary, we currently have a team that is working on behavioral interventions, right, for our students that don't respond to that tier-one piece and maybe more behavioral coaching or teaching, right? We have purchased and are working out our implementation plans and training plans, which you'll see on our next one, for the behavioral wellness component. This also ties to our MTSS framework. When you think about SEL and how it works into MTSS, a big part of that is having not only a framework for tier-one, but also intervening. At the high school level, or at the secondary, middle school, and high school, big piece is that relationship piece. Everybody's going to be engaged in that, right? So our tool looks different at the secondary level that we'll be rolling out and working with our buildings on. But the work's already started on that. We actually asked 300 students at the middle and high school level, what is a relationship mean and why is it important to even build our tool? So we were working from a common vocabulary, a common place. The other focus or priority within relation to the framework that we're building resources around and actually analyzing a lot of current resources is having a consistent approach to suicide and depression awareness in grade 6 through 12. We do a lot of really good work in that area, a lot of good preventative work, but it's an area where we want to be even more consistent, and we're developing that right now. So our 6-12 team, we have a subgroup that's working on that as well. So these are our initial priorities from a district perspective. In the same capacity, the framework allows buildings to still take on pieces of these and us to provide support in these areas. How does that roll out, or how does that translate into building or building capacity for staff? It might be a little small in your presentation, but in your packets, you actually have our professional learning plan for 2019, 2020, and you'll see the plate's pretty full, right? But if you also look over to the right, there are some trainings that all staff will participate in, but then there are some trainings that are just for select people. Because some of the interventions, some of the work may only pertain to psychologists, social workers, or counselors. And then some of the work pertains to all staff. The first piece is SEL framework training. We call it the "what" and "why." It's a little bit like I did with you here today, but there's more reflection built in and some common purposes and connections. I'm actually carrying that out at all 20 of our buildings right now. We've got all 18. 18 of our buildings will be done by the end of the year. We're doing both high schools at the beginning of next year, because it ties to the work on their institute day and ties to our relationship training for the framework piece. But you can see our elementary professional learning opportunities, our secondary professional learning opportunities, and I even added our parent education series in there as well. At this point, I'll stop and take any questions at this point.
I have a question, man. I love the idea of the whole student connectedness, and it makes perfect sense to me at the elementary school level, but that a student, a homeroom teacher is their person that they're connected to. When you get to the middle school, how are we explicitly making this happen? Who's that person supposed to be to each individual child? And how do we make sure that they are part of this?
That's a great question. And so, at the middle and high school level, you have a student touching seven, eight, nine different teachers a day, so you have to think systematically about your approach, right? So, one, you're still getting student voice, do they have a trusted adult, right? Can they identify that person? But in the same breath, there's opportunities to work with a professional learning community for students that don't have that connector, and there are certainly approaches you can put in place then to deliberately connect with that student. You also have resources such as your counselors, your social workers, all different people that can work in there. There's also an opportunity, and we will present this with a tool, to do a staff crosswalk, where you identify, take a look at all of your students in your school, your whole staff's a part of this, and you go through every student, say, "Can you name five things outside of them as a learner? Five personal things about this child? If you can't..." And we have students that are missing there, that's another way to check ourselves, to say, "We have to have a deliberate process for a candidate student." So, truth be told, a little more simplistic at the elementary level, because you have contact with a teacher every day. Secondary level, you've got to think a little bit more systematically about it. And that's the option, that one that we built, and that will be a key piece of that day-long training for our 10 high school folks and middle school.
I'm still a little unsure of how this is being communicated to students. You're a middle school or a high school student, and you're starting a new school year. Are you going into, is somebody telling you, "Go find somebody that's your buddy in this building"? I mean, how do they...
No. Yeah, yeah. I think that one of the things that our community's been really cautious of is, really, a relationship and a connection has to be authentic. So even if a student was to say, "I don't have a trusted adult," you've got to be really cautious and then attacking that child and saying, "Why don't you have a relationship with anybody?", right? So instead, there are different ways of getting at that, whether it's conferencing with the student, whether it's identifying a staff member that's familiar with the student and add staff members, and reaching out to the student that's not connected. But prior to even asking that student about the connection, we've got a pre-instructional lesson that we built that talks about why relationships are important. One of the things we tell the kids is, or that is in our teacher script, says, "We care about you because we want you to be safe here, and when you're safe here and you feel cared for, you learn more." It's really something as simple as that, right? But again, one prescription doesn't fit every child either, and I think that's the autonomy and the beauty of teaching as well, right? We'll provide a variety of resources. Not every resource fits every teacher, so you want a kind of a wide kind of toolbox for our teachers. Does that help a little bit?
A little bit. I guess, put it another way, how are we getting the message out to our kids starting from the middle school on that it's important to us that they feel connected to somebody? And where is that message coming? Is it being repeated in every class somehow? Or is there somebody assigned that task, either the homeroom teacher, is it access crew? How do we, how are we getting that message out to the kids?
Yeah, I think presently, I think all of our buildings are operating in different places than that, but I will tell you that all of our schools have a focus on relationships from a systematic district approach. We don't have a consistent approach to that right now. That's why it's a priority of ours. That's why it's a priority of ours to kick off and pull. Right now, I can tell you, I mean, with all of our principals knowing many of our staff members, that's a focus. Do we have a systematic, consistent approach around that? We don't right now. That's why we're developing a tool, providing a training so we can approach that.
So Chris, as you talked about that staff walk that's going through, and I mean, I think, Jenna, that might also, you know, if every, if all the students are laid out and I don't want to be, like, someone's writing their name next to it, but if the building is making that concerted effort, the student might not quite be able to verbalize that. But I think a staff member would be able to say, I'm making that connection. I'm talking with that person every day. Am I right in assuming that that's kind of a, possibly a route that we're going to go? So is that, and I, believe me, I love this. This is what I do for a living. I look at all of these priorities and all of this professional training. And I think of that, those teachers and those buildings, and we're asking so much more now of them. So how are we managing that with what is their everyday responsibilities? Because this is above and beyond what they're already doing. And then throw in a new social studies curriculum and throw in this. How are we managing that?
Yeah, I think that's a great, fair question. I think that first piece and the message we know is priority one is the relationship and the connectedness. If we can do that for every single kid, we're doing really, really well. So one, I think it's how you filter the message through our leadership team, right? I would also say really being cognizant of how we roll out of professional learning is important. So again, purpose of a framework is kind of tight and loose, right? So it is the job of our leaders to walk that tight and loose piece with knowing the culture of our building and knowing some of the things we want to take on. So even as we provide that training, buildings may decide to customize their tool. We're going to give them autonomy to how they want to pilot this, especially in year one, because success breeds success. So truth be told, the framework, I believe a framework approach allows you that autonomy to balance the pressures on our staff, right? And makes really the approaches authentic. When you look at our training, right, the framework trainings already happen as you create capacity. Our behavior wellness training, that's really about classroom management and foundational work. These are things that are already happening. So I think layering in and being cognizant of our work. And then some of them are for select people as well, right? Areas where we know we need to cover that some. But it's certainly an area of cognizance, I think. And one of the top jobs of our school district leaders is to be that barrier for our staff in filtering priorities. Great question.
Chris, back to the ACEs component. Do we have, is there data available about students that are, that we're able to capture? I don't know how to do it, or it's even legal, quite frankly. But so that teachers have kind of a heads up, so they're, the antennae go up and they may just approach that situation, at least have an awareness so they're better prepared?
Yeah. So two ways to look at that. The first piece, when you actually go through the ACEs training, the trauma and form training, is to assume that all students have had ACEs. And the reason why that is, is if you are seeking to connect and provide a safe environment, which are your top two strategies, those are good for kids that have had ACEs or happened, right? So that's one lens. But the second lens is, we know that there are students that have had many ACEs and come to us with a lot of adversity. And so that data is not necessarily going to come to us through their medical profile, through an ACEs survey or something like that. But our social workers, our psychologists, our student support teams, we have articulation pieces set up. That's what M T S S is also for, so kids are working through tiers. So we know our students that have the at-risk pieces. I think the addition of being deliberate about the relationship piece also will give us information to, is a kid connected or disconnected? So I think there's multiple pieces that kind of layer into that. Does that make sense? Yeah.
And I think sometimes too, it comes through observing and looking at some of the disciplined aid and situations as well. So, you know, again, I think, you know, the, we've done some work over the last couple of years and really looking at alternate options to just out-of-school suspension or moving kids out. And so a big part of that is looking at some of those restorative practice elements that help you, and unfortunately may come after a situation has happened. But in some of that restorative practice, you begin to learn what may have driven a student or groups of students toward, you know, particular behaviors. Sometimes it comes from that.
I have the advantage in attending the C A C meeting in February. And again, in March, to hear Chris's presentation on S E L, a ninety-minute presentation in February, and the ten-minute presentation in March where we got feedback from the members of the C A C on how to improve the communication with the parents, what questions Chris thought anticipated from parents. There's wonderful feedback from the C A C members. And just from my observation, the meeting in February, everyone there was really focused and into Chris's presentation. It really went over very well. And there were some skeptics, I think, at the beginning of the presentation who admitted at the end that they had seen the real value of having a focused S E L program. And it also, it was encouraging to me to see the value of the C A C when they gave the feedback to Chris on how we can tailor his presentation to parents, the ten-minute presentation. And also Charlie spoke on the student handbook and some of the questions that were backlit with getting the feedback from the C A C members on how to address those parts of the student handbook. So it was a good learning experience for me, both on the S E L presentation and on the value of our C A C process.
So first off, I have two questions for Jim and Jenny as to one of them about the ACEs. So I have one question, but before that, I finally had my aha moment. I've been passionate about this, interested in this, but I really never was able to figure it out, how connected into traditional learning. And I was reading this and paying close attention to what you were saying, but there was one word that you used all the time and there was one word that was never used. We talk about skills all the time and we never mentioned knowledge, right? So as I was listening to this and I'm thinking of traditional curriculum and how do we communicate this to our parent community? You know, it's not, this is not something that we can, a teacher can sit in front of the classroom and say, here's what you need to do. These are skills that have to be nurtured and practiced and learned. So that's kind of how I finally figured out how these two things fit together, but they have to be separate. So it's just kind of an observation. And kind of with that is, you know, we have our kids for six to seven hours a day. And so I'm curious as to, how do we let our parent community know that this is what we're doing? How do we educate them, you know, way beyond the role of school? We know we have to educate our parents and other community members so that, and inform them what S E L is, how they can help support the school's efforts during the small window of time that we have them. And, you know, so this is kind of an interest of mine is how do we, we've talked about this in, I think, the first meeting. Is this, how do we communicate this to our parent community other than saying, hey, we're doing social emotional learning? And what it is and why it's important and the role they have and how they're so critical in this? And, you know, is this a campaign that we need to do? I'm throwing that word out there. Is this a, in my business, we go brand an initiative to really kind of, yeah, we're doing all this great stuff, we're saving all kinds of money and refunding, we're achieving great on test scores and kids are graduating, going to great colleges. But hey, there's this other thing that is so important. We need to spend time teaching our parents and teaching our community why this is so critical and their role. So that's, I guess, a question wrapped up in a comment. I don't know.
Yeah. So the short answer to that is, I think, like a multi-faceted approach. I think the first piece is thinking of different structures that you can get to our parents at. And actually, that was the purpose of our last C A C. We asked the question, if we have ninety minutes with a parent, what do we need to know? Or what do they need to know? And if we have five to ten minutes with a parent, what do we need to know? And they gave us some really valuable feedback that we'll take in. So what structures do you then disseminate that information in? One, having a commitment to some consistent electronic communication. Next year, we're going to have Wellness Wednesdays where we really talk about what the parent can do in their home in relation to prevention, high expectations in relation to all these pieces. It also means upping our game on some of our parents' serious pieces, right? So we've got a commitment from the St. Excellent Foundation, Jessica Leahy. We're looking at some other speakers that can bring people into connective. And then another piece really is, if you think about this framework and if it was built out to another section, a priority and an ongoing process that's going to be part of this is really the parent piece, bringing this to life. What does this look like? So I, as a parent, what does this look like in our school so that I can connect with it? So we're grappling with some ideas of how we can catch real-life videos and examples of teachers and students sharing these pieces in each of these components and having some interactive features there as well. So I guess that that's a medium answer to all those pieces. I think it's multifaceted, but all these pieces lump themselves into the community. Even as you think about emotional wellness, how we even strengthen our partnerships with our outside agencies, all those different pieces tie into it. So what I will tell you is, there's a lot of ways to get at it and commit to it.
It's not one.
It's not one.
Oh, just an observation, since we're doing the gift of failure, my mind goes to one school, one books. Can we do that approach with our district? Put something out there in May, June to parents? This author's coming. Here's her summer reading, blurbs throughout the summer. Somebody's, you know, S L Ts reading it, blog posts, little, get excitement, get people reading so that when she comes, they're ready to apply some of what she's saying.
Yeah, we're currently exploring that. We partner with Prairie Path Books, right? So and I think even maybe tying some of those pieces, that's really good feedback. Absolutely. So we know that there's going to be opportunities and we've been working to get the books out, even to the point where we try to purchase them right now. I can't find any more actually because we keep on overloading Amazon. That's why we're partnering with Prairie Path. But I think that that, there's going to be a tie in there to market it. Absolutely. Chris, please.
One of the things that we did is that I bought out of superintendent budget this year. I bought a hundred copies of that book. We gave one to everybody on the C A C. We gave one to everyone on P K Council with a bookmark with Jessica Leahy's date and really a charge of saying, see that this book gets five deep. Read it, pass it on, have that person pass it on. So if those hundred books get to five people, we know at least five hundred parents will have been exposed to that work in addition to any of the other just kind of, you know, general, we'd like to get people reading it. So we have tried to do some of that kind of organically by just seeding and getting some books out there as well with the bookmark that has the date. And that's what it's all about.
Just, you know, I think I was trying to ask this before and I loved the presentation. The, I feel like we've changed, this has kind of come up on me. I, S E L, I think that maybe this was part of the focus 2020 or something and we're presenting the C A C and so on. So, I mean, something's changed here. How is, how did we get so deeply into this topic? What, I missed the transition, I guess is what I'm trying to say. I like it very much, but I just, you know, I don't know that we're emphasizing. You know, we're not, you know, we're talking about training our parents and everything. So where did we, how do we go from A to Z here or something like that? I guess, you know, is it part of our goal system that I missed this significance, I guess, a little bit?
Yeah. So one, you said it as a goal this year. So it's definitely a board goal that you set. Again, not a, not a new topic. I would say for really the last three to four years, you know, even when Dr. Panopoulos was here, kind of with oversight, there's a lot of exposure around the topic. I think, you know, very clearly, the transition and the opportunity to bring Chris into the role was very intentionally because we're at a pivot point and this needed to go now, right? We had spent a couple of years laying foundation, building understanding, especially at the staff level, and it needed to kind of hit the accelerator point this year in moving out. So not new, certainly from our level, but I think to some degree, Jim, that was part of the goal of this presentation is to try to help you be able to visualize a little bit more, what is this? So, I mean, S E L, I mean, it's easy to just say, hey, we're doing S E L. But what does that mean until you really start to understand the five components and how those elements are tied together? So it shouldn't have been, hopefully it was not that big of a surprise kind of where this came from, but it's got a new focus this year, no doubt about it. Obviously, in the structure of the district and the work that we've done, we've given it kind of a higher emphasis around that.
Yeah, I agree with you, but I think, again, the way we're talking about it, we're saying this is, this is something new. We're, you know, this is, we're talking about the C A C. We're talking about training parents. We're talking about community engagement process. And I think we need to beef that up because, again, I'm very impressed by what I'm hearing right now. And I'm not sure that I had this perception. When we set those goals, I think it was this vague thing to me and it sounded good, but I really didn't have a clear understanding of how it, you know, its emphasis and success is. And I think it's, you know, from what I'm hearing, it's leading other districts that were taking this emphasis and moving forward in this direction. So I think, you know, that's a win-win for our community. And I appreciate it and I think we have to develop that communication better.
Okay. I want to echo that because I don't think that's an unusual statement. I think that's a very common statement. And I, I get it, right? And I think it's really important for us to understand for those of us, for those of the people in the room who are in the profession of education, it's very obvious. For those of us who are not in the profession of education, and that is the majority of our community, they don't get it, right? And I, you know, I'm the same way. It took, it's taken me, Chris is educating us to understand the importance of it. And I think that's a really, really important message as we think about community engagement. And I don't know how we solve that, you know, because it's, you know, but I don't want to lose sight of that because I think it's a really, really important point. And it's going to be really critical because it's such a critical topic.
There's two things that we've done. There's one, we've created an S E L committee. So Chris and I serve on that committee and have learned a lot through that. And the reason it's on the agenda tonight is because we saw this a few months ago. We said, oh, this is so great. We need to get the whole committee or the whole board to see this. But also every month, we're having an updated, a regular business meeting to keep it front and center, kids, you know, a student learning focus, an S E L focus. It's about kids. So the board, through those actions, I believe, is trying to elevate this into our conversation more. So it's great.
I think you must be an educator. No, I think Rob summed it up really well. And I, again, you know, I'm just a simple guy and I love what I'm hearing. And I think it's bringing it in. It's really, these are the things we have to say in the world, you know, that we're doing something special again, and this is our idea.
And I, again, I agree with you a hundred percent, right? And but I will, again, just say and illustrate that even, I mean, this is, well, new understanding from today, it's not the first time you've heard about S E L. And yet it took a good hour to kind of unpack this. And the reality is, which is kind of where we had that conversation with citizen advisor committees, we're not going to get a sixty-minute window with every parent and community member. It's just a reality. And so we're going to also have to look at, you know, some strategies and also not lose sight of there are other topics around which we still want to continue to do engagement as well. We've talked about fit. We've talked about all the financial realities of the school district. And so there are these other layers of topics. And again, I think this has got some priority for us, but obviously, again, also can't come at, you know, losing sight of some of the fit work and some of the other pieces that we're doing as well. We got a lot we're trying to, you know, to communicate. And very last thing, as I would just say around this, so Jenna, I think you asked a question that you want to come back to. That is one of the conversation points right now. Are, you know, are in some places, are there some structural elements that have to be looked at for how some elements of S E L can be rolled out? In some buildings, there are natural structures that already exist where you can teach elements. But in some places, I think, you know, some of that conversation's been even middle school around perhaps looking at, you know, some structures. You know, I think Edison explored, rolled out an advisory structure where they kind of used a heavier advisory period window at the beginning of the year to do some explicit teaching with some follow-up. And I think there's some of the conversations that are taking place where we've had to give them a little bit of latitude to think a little different to some degree with some of their schedules as well. And again, I just mention that to the board because as some of those conversations happen, you know, some of this may come at the cost of some borrowed time from perhaps academic, you know, periods. That if you're going to teach this, yeah, that does. That if you're going to teach this, yeah, that does have to come from somewhere and either on an ongoing basis or sometimes that might mean that, you know, that three or four or five minutes come off of, you know, our academic schedules. And again, you know, understandable, some of those things may not be popular to everybody as we start to do some of that and then, you know, some other pieces. But we're looking at some of those, some of those elements as well to create that opportunity or support principals as they do that.
Final piece of this is just, this is last year's metric for the dashboard where it was determined holding constant. If you're all comfortable with it, I would recommend, I think we're at major progress, right? We saw the future work out ahead of us, but I think we've made great progress this year with our efforts through all the collateral. So I would like to upgrade that to the major progress piece, right?
Work with the board. I really am pleased with your presentation. So one final question, and it's probably impossible to answer. I've shared with the committee that I'd love to be, like, recognized as the best or one of the best school districts in the state about this. I'd love to present at conferences. How do we know if we're great? How do we determine if what we've set out for in gone through a few years, if we are great? It's a possible question to answer, but it's kind of where my head's going, because you can't measure it. Or if you can, how can you measure?
You measure it in a lot of ways, yeah. There's a lot of ways to get at it, but I'll, that'd be a long answer.
As long as you have a plan.
Yeah.
Okay. We have any other public? Excellent. So we have, we do have one close, we do have one old session tonight. I move the adjourned closed session for the purpose of discussing the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing, testimony, and a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. Five ILCS 120 slash two, subparagraf C, subparagraf one. Do I have a second? Second. Second, my Mr. Hamlin. No problem?
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Veron?
Yes.
Great. We're moving to closed session, no action is, will be taken following closed session.